Board of Selectmen to order, December 7th, 2021, at the North Brookfield Police Department. If you'd all please join me in saluting the flag. Pleasure allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'd all just stay standing for one minute, I want to recognize that today is the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. So I would all ask for just one moment of silence in remembrance of those lost that day. Great, thank you so much. All right, so first order of business, we don't have any minutes to approve tonight. So on to the warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 12 for $408,220.75. Payroll warrant number 12A for $2,521.05. General warrant 1026 for $408,285.77. And school warrant number 1025 for $50,740.41.
So move second.
Motion made, second all in favor. We don't have any financial items to discuss tonight. I think everything was done and moved around at town meeting, so.
Yeah, we had 23 cents to spare.
All right, we were going to spend it all.
I guess Sheila did her math pretty well.
She did it really, really well, yes.
So old business, we have the water superintendent's contract that we agreed to, we just.
Last week you agreed to it. I checked it over with his.
Oh, sewer superintendent, I'm sorry. It says water superintendent on here.
Oh, I didn't put that.
Yeah, I remember discussing it, sewer superintendent, yep. Yep, and we, we, it's almost all the same, there was just only a few ministerial changes, so. I'll entertain a motion that we execute the agreement.
So move second.
In favor? And then we have annual license renewals. Suppose we should read them all off? These are the licenses that we're going to renew? Want to do those, please?
License renewals for 2022, alcohol renewals, Still Hearts, Stars and Stripes. Want me to read the names of the people too?
Nah, no.
North Brookfield Liquors, Bob's Deli, North Brookfield Sportsman's Club, American Legion Post 41, Stats, Common Ground, Common Vic Renewals, Vibram, Brookfield Orchards, North Brookfield Pizza Palace, North Brookfield Subway, Hannaford, Jim's Pizza, North Brookfield Liquors, Bob's Deli, American Legion Post 41, North Brookfield Sportsman's Club, Still Hearts, Stars and Stripes, Thomas F. Waugh, DBA Stats Sports Pub, Algoos Convenience, Common Ground, Auctioneers Renewals, Dupree Metal Recycling, Pool Table Renewals, Stars and Stripes and Still Hearts, Jukebox, Pinball and Video Game Renewals, Stars and Stripes, Still Hearts, Stats, Live Entertainment Renewals, North Brookfield Sportsman's Club, Thomas Waugh, DBA Stats, Still Hearts, Common Ground, Class II Renewals, Country Auto Body, Dupree Metal Recycling, Steven Woods, DBA, SMD Woods Auto Sales, 83 Shore Road, Class III Renewals, Dupree Metal Recycling.
So we have, the fees have been paid for all of these?
So the way the process normally works is with the alcohol, they have to sign a renewal form. They've all signed the renewal form and returned them. I send them a letter stating that you guys have renewed the licenses. Upon receipt of the fees, I give them the license. So I have all those letters ready to be sent out tomorrow.
Okay, so the, so the motion is to approve the renewals pending payment of the fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll entertain that motion.
So move second.
Motion made, second all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's see, a plumbing quote for senior center, do we have that, or are we still waiting?
We have a quote from Ken Nye for $1,975 for labor and materials for the actual plumbing part of it.
He didn't give a very descriptive quote, so Jamie, were you able to get ahold of him today at all?
I was, it, it's a pretty simple process as to what he's doing. He's pretty much re, team me from on water superintendent. He's pretty much just relocating the meter location in the building for us to alleviate a leak that we have going on their service line on the property to the service center. So pretty much he's moving the water service from one of the bathrooms to the front of the building. So it's pretty much just putting pipe from A to B and relocating the meter. So that's why I think is, there wasn't much of a description on his quote. So like I said, there's not much involved other than that, so.
Yeah, and that, now, did we vote on having Highway Water do the work last time?
Yeah, we voted on asking Jason Anoy to work with Jamie and Eddie Tebow to get it all done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the only part we need, is the plumber to do that, that meter movement, and they're going to handle the rest. We've already talked about that, so.
Did Troy ever give us a price?
Not yet.
That's what we're waiting for.
So we can't approve this one until we get.
Yeah, well, I suppose we can approve.
Unless you just want to approve Ken's. Like I said, my, my whole point of it is I'm bleeding money at the water department with this leak ongoing, it being so big, so.
Yeah, he was selling us, it's $5,500 a month that we're bleeding.
So is it, does it end up being an emergency type of thing to get this?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we gotta stop it.
Like I said, I've given a 30-day notice and we're over that now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I'd say we could probably, we go to low bid, right? I mean, it's just.
Pretty much, I mean, you're not going to get much, he's the local guy we use on everything and suggests because he's pretty much one of the littlest guys around.
Yep.
With quality work, of course.
Yep, and you guys are doing all the outside work.
Yeah.
You're cutting the floor inside.
We're going to cut the floor on the inside, I'll do all that part, work with the town so we can save all the excavation costs and whatnot, and it's not going to cost anything other than the block.
So he's taking it from the meter up?
To the front, yep, up over across the ceiling and down into that front corner of the building. That's all I need them to do, and then he can hook it up once we bring the water line up through the front of the building.
Okay. Yep, no, we're good with that.
All right, so.
I move to accept Ken Nye's proposal.
Second.
Motion made, second all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have a, an appointment to the playground committee? All right, Tina has requested to be appointed to the playground committee. And we, how many obanks do we have now, two?
Just the one.
Just the one?
Yeah. Joe and Sal are still on, Bernie, Bernie gave in last, last week or two weeks ago.
Right, okay, I remember. All right, so, well, Tina's another quantity, and there's no.
Did you guys vote for her to?
We had a meeting, just a little while ago, and we're both 100% okay with Tina joining.
On board with Tina, okay.
Very okay with Tina.
Yep.
Do you need to tell us about yourself and what your plans are?
Don't do that.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion.
So. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And here are your rocks, by the way. Don't lose them. Okay, so the only other pending thing is a tax classification hearing at 6:30, so we've got plenty of time to hear from the library trustees.
Okay, thank you. I'm Peg Bodine, Chair of the Haston Library Board of Trustees, and here tonight we have Tom Scouring, Ellen Smith, and Sherry Murphy to join us. In Harbor, of course. Fresh off the booster shot line at the school. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, although I don't know any of you personally. I do know that selectmen spend many hours working for the residents of North Brookfield to make this town the best town it can be. As trustees, that's our goal too. We're on the same team. We were disappointed to learn after the fact about grievances expressed at the November 9th meeting. We'd like to provide some information to you and to the town that was not presented at that meeting to correct erroneous information and to provide some context. The Board of Trustees has several duties. One is to establish a written policy for the selection of library materials in accordance with the standards adopted by the American Library Association. Our policies can be found on the library's website under the general info tab. Another is to appoint a qualified library director who shall be the executive and administrative officer of the library. Some of the director's duties include the care and maintenance of the library property, adequate and proper selection of books and other library materials in keeping with the stated policy of the board, offering efficient library service to the public, and managing financial operation within the limits of the budgeted appropriation. Over three years ago, we hired a very capable, knowledgeable, and passionate library director. We trustees are all grateful for everything that she has done, and I'm happy to introduce Dawn Thistle.
Thanks, Peg.
You're welcome.
So there were a lot of things that were mentioned in the November 9th meeting that were not quite right, and so we'd like to address some of that. But before I do, I'd like to invite anybody who's here to come to the library and have a tour, to see how things are displayed and how things are done. Just give me a call and I'll set up a time, or just come when we're open, and if I'm there, I'll be glad to show you anything that you have questions about. So I'd like to talk about three different things that came up in that meeting. Displays in the library, library material selection practices, and some specific topics that came up during Joanne Carey's presentation and following it. In regard to displays in the library, all the displays in the library are there so that materials will circulate. That's it. They're not museum exhibits. Anything that's in a display is there to be borrowed. We have two different kinds of displays. One is for new acquisitions, and we display all the different kinds of things that we have at the library, juvenile materials, fiction, nonfiction, books on CD, DVDs. If it's new, it gets put in a place where people can see it. Then we also have themed displays, and those are on topics, depending on which display area it is. It could be in the children's room, and it could be a display on summer reading, or on a holiday, or on wildlife in Massachusetts. If it's in our glass case when you go into the library, we usually see that as a bit more educational, and we put things in there like Classical Music Month, or Irish Heritage Month, or the American Presidency. Different things like that, that show off materials that we have in the collection, no matter how new or old they are, if they meet that theme, we display them there, and maybe there will be some additional information that helps to educate people on that topic. The materials that are in themed displays, even if they're in the glass case, there's a little sign there that says, "If you want to borrow these materials, just tell us and we'll get them for you." So anything that's on display is on display for the purpose of circulation. The new nonfiction, which was, I think, Joanne's main focus, includes, well, it's on a bookcase that's directly across from the circulation desk. We keep them there because the rest of the nonfiction materials are shelved down in the lower level of the library, and people wouldn't necessarily know we had them if they weren't someplace on the main level. So they're there right across from the circulation desk, and those books are all types of nonfiction. I was reviewing the video of the meeting, and it, and it sounded to me like all of the books are political books. At any given time, the most, the greatest number of political books that might be on display is three. I've never seen more than that on display there. And sometimes they're conservative, and sometimes they're more liberal. It depends on what has come in and what's the most recent acquisition. In addition to political books, you'll find books on science topics, you'll find books on do-it-yourself, you'll find books on cooking, you'll find books on foreign affairs, you'll find books on travel. If it's a subject that a book can be written on, if it's nonfiction and I purchase that book, as soon as it comes in and is catalogued, it's up on that display. Books remain, as Joanne said, up there for maybe about a week. It sort of depends on how quickly new books come in, but as newer books come in, the older books, if they haven't circulated, move to another display level. And then from there, they move downstairs to another display level, and then from there, they move to the shelves. So it's all about bringing the books to people's attention, not to keep them up there so that people can see, oh, well, they collect this thing or that thing. So the displays are just rotating as quickly as we get materials in. And that's the same for fiction books as well. We have fiction materials of all fiction genres, and they all get displayed in the new fiction display area. New children's books, picture books, get displayed on top of a bookcase, the low bookcase where the picture books are. New children's fiction get displayed on the bookcases at the end of every row of stacks. Everything gets displayed as it comes in and is catalogued. It's all right there, as space allowed. So lots of times, books come in, are catalogued, and put up on the display, and somebody sees it and they check it out right away. If you're not in the library every single day, you won't see everything that gets put on display. And that happens quite often with political titles because people have been waiting for those. So that's how displays work. Are there any questions about displays? Joanne did say that there are hundreds and hundreds, and that's a quote, of liberal titles. That is not true. We do have possibly more liberal titles than conservative titles, which was why I said to her, "Please give me a list." I don't want that to be the way it is perceived, because I do order conservative titles. I have for the full three years that I've been here, but probably there are more liberal titles that I've ordered. And I'll get into that in a minute. Are there any, I already asked you, any other questions about displays from anybody? Okay, so the next thing is, how do we select materials? You have in front of you, I think, someplace, our material selection policy, and it's pretty high-minded. It's pretty standard library language about how we choose things. We look for quality, accuracy, authoritativeness, timelessness. We look for objectivity in things to the extent that that's possible. Of course, with political titles, that's not really, especially nowadays, but we look for good materials. And the way we find those is by reviewing reviews. We look at book lists, we look at the New York Times Book Review, we look at Library Journal, we look at reviews that come out in different magazines on different topics. So for example, if I'm looking at a craft magazine and there's a book in there that's been reviewed by one of their writers, then I will often buy one of those because those aren't generally reviewed in the bigger review sources. So I look for more specific areas for more specific types of things. I also get a lot of publishers' catalogs. I look through the publishers' catalogs to see what's new in different topic areas. All of those things, while you can never be completely sure about the quality or the authoritativeness, you can, you can get a sense based on who the publisher is, or who the author is, or if there is an indication that there are citations and that research has gone into those titles. So if, if they're listed in one of these sources, I can be fairly confident that they are good sources. But the best source of information is patron suggestions, and that's why I wanted to hear from Joanne about what she thought would be good titles in that area of conservative writers, conservative topics. As she told you, she met with me multiple times, and then she met with us all at the library trustees, and she was encouraged at every step of the way to give me a list, to make suggestions, to, to help me build that part of the collection. If I agree with her that there's a gap there, which I did, you know, I don't know what else I can do. So she did give me a list, and I ordered several books from the list. And at the time of the meeting, November 9th, I had ordered 14 books on conservative topics and by conservative authors. Not three, 14. Of those 14, I'm not sure exactly how many had come in at that point, because you never know. Are they going to be backordered? Are they out of stock? Are they not yet published? And in some cases, all of those things are true. So I ordered 14 books, and since then I've ordered three more. You know, now, now, she came into the library yesterday and she, and I had more discussions about it, and I thanked her, I said, "You know, you've made me aware of an issue that I wasn't conscious of before, and so now I'm on the look for these things." So I've bought the new book that just came out on Rush Limbaugh. I bought the Chief's Chief, the Mark Meadows book. So you know, once I see these things, and once they start coming through on the bestseller lists, and I'm aware of them, then I will order them. There was no conspiracy not to buy conservative books at all, and no intention to keep people from reading those kinds of materials. So other things that I look at, that I just mentioned briefly, are gaps within our collection. If, if I see that that's a gap, then I will buy a bunch of books on that title, on that topic, to try and build up that area. Another area that I've been working on over the past several months is music. We don't have a lot of materials on music. Excuse me. So I bought several books, biographies of classical composers, and books on music history, things like that. Joanne also pointed out that we were low on books about the Vietnam War. There's more to that story than just that, but I, she and I went down and looked at the shelves together, and I agreed with her that there weren't very many books on the Vietnam War. So I ordered 15 books on the Vietnam War. Most of those have come in, but some of them, given the date of their publication, given that, you know, when the war took place, some of those are still backordered and have not yet come in. And another, so those are examples of ways that we can approach gaps in the collection. If a patron comes to me and says, "Hey, you know, you don't really have any books on this," then I'll look at it, and we'll see, okay, what do we need to fill that? Is it appropriate for me to fill that? Maybe it's not. But anyway, we also add books to the collection from donations. People, usually when they donate books to the library, they're cleaning out their closets, and they want to get rid of all the stuff that's been accumulating dust for a long time. And we make it clear to them that those books are probably going to go into the book sale because they're not in good condition, they're not new. But if there are new books in there, there are books that are in good condition that we don't have, if it's a, if it's a popular author and we don't have that title, I often add books from those donations. That's not at all unusual. But what we do is we let people know that they're going, they're quite likely to go into the book sale. We actually have a form that we give out to people when, when we have a chance to. It's an in-kind gift form that states, "Books and other materials given to the Haston Free Public Library become the property of the library. All gift items are carefully reviewed and will either be added to the collection or placed in our book sale with proceeds to be used to fund new library materials." And they can put their names on there, they can sign it, they can let us know, you know, what it is that they're donating, whether they'd like to receive a written acknowledgement, and sometimes people who give large numbers of books do like to receive an acknowledgement because they use that for tax purposes. So we try to make it very clear that when people donate books, it may be added to the collection, but maybe not, and it's our property once they donate it, and it's our decision. Finally, in regard to materials in the collection, or not in the collection, if we don't own something, and one of you mentioned this on November 9th, if we don't own something, you can get it on interlibrary loan. Jessica's a big interlibrary loan user over there, and, and she's, she's a perfect example. I'm glad to see her here tonight because there's one area, well, there are several areas, that we don't collect things in. And one of them is romances. Am I saying too much? She likes romances.
A lot of libraries, they'll only have one or two in a series, and the next library will have one or two of the same series. So you have to, to get the whole series, you have to get them from a bunch of different libraries.
And she's a voracious reader, she'll get them all, all at once, but. Anyway, you can get books from wherever. If CW Mars doesn't have the books, then the Commonwealth Catalog, which does, the whole state of Massachusetts will get it. So many times, I'll, when somebody looks, somebody requests a book, or there's a book I'm interested in, I'll look to see how many libraries in CW Mars own it. If 200 libraries, well, I guess there aren't 200, if 120 libraries own that book, and there are 95 holds on that title, I'll go ahead and order that book because I know there are people in this town that want to see that title, and if I don't own it here in North Brookfield, then they have to go to the bottom of the queue to request it from some other library. If we have it here, I can set a limit that says, for the first six weeks after it's catalogued, only North Brookfield people can check it out. So even if there are lots of copies at CW Mars, I will often buy it. Conversely, if there are a lot of copies and nobody's checking them out, if they're all available, I'll think, yeah, this is not such a great title, maybe we don't need it. So that's another thing that we do when we're looking at acquisitions.
I don't want to rush you, but we have a tax classification in two minutes, so.
Okay, two minutes.
Get you.
All right, last couple of things. Let's see. Joanne mentioned Dreams From Our Founding Fathers by Ron DeSantis. I tried and tried to get that, it's no longer in print. It's published by a company called High Pitched Hum, which is not what I would consider a very good publisher, and in fact, it's just one step above self-publishing. And so there was a very small run of that book made. You can get it for Kindle, so if you're all looking for it, you have to buy it yourself and read it on Kindle because the only copies that are available in print now are used copies, and they cost well over $100 each. So that's that. The Tuttle Twins, somebody mentioned the Tuttle Twins books, and, hm? Right, well, here they are. They've been catalogued, not only were they catalogued, but there's a gift plate in all of them that says, "Gift of Anonymous in Honor of American Veterans." Now, I couldn't acknowledge this gift because I don't know who Anonymous is. So you all wouldn't have known what happened to this unless you came to the library and saw them on display in the children's library.
They were on display.
Yeah, but, but up in the children's library on the ends of the, you know, where, where we display them. And finally, the meeting room. You have the meeting room policy in front of you as well. Anybody can have a meeting in the meeting room if they're an organization, and if one person takes responsibility to have the meeting there. I've been asked about, can the Republicans meet here? And I said, "Well, of course they can," but I am not aware that there is a Republican town committee. So I'm not sure, you know, what, what the thing is about that. If the Republicans want to gather down in the, in the meeting room in the library. If the Republicans want to gather down in the, in the meeting room of the library, please do. All you have to do is come to the library and fill out a form. So I'll close with that. If there are any questions about any of it, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know how we came across, but for me, it was just parity of the books. If there was a disparity, then that needed to be addressed. Otherwise, you guys choose the books, and I don't think, as far as what goes on there, I don't think we would have a say in that at all, so.
I think what Joanne was, was bringing forward is that there, you mentioned that you've bought a number of books. Well, it sounds like you've bought about 30 books. I didn't do the full math, but of the other side. Well, what she was, I think what she was questioning was, why weren't those books purchased before she got involved with you and the, and the committee? That's what I got from it. Whether you have 10 books or 20 books of one or the other, chances are, I'm not likely to go down there, but there are people that, that would go down there and want to see both sides. It sounds like you're taking care of it. I just don't understand why it took her voice to get that across. It sounds like to me, like you weren't buying the same number of books from both sides. I don't know, because I, like you said, you're buying the books, the committee buys the books.
And that's, and that's true.
Yep.
But it depends on when things are published.
Yep.
And when they come out in the reviews, and when I see them. If I don't know they've been published, then I can't do anything about that.
Yep.
But I thanked her yesterday for bringing, you know, to bring, continuing to bring it to my attention, because it's made me more aware. And now I'm looking in different sources to kind of add to my awareness.
Yep.
So that's all I ask.
I'm sure she'll keep an eye on things down there, because she seems very astute with her process, so. And thank you for doing what you can for her.
Yeah. But in the end, it's your issues.
I have to hear that, first of all, I, there were some things that were said about the library board. Oh, I can take this off. Thank you. We're, we're a non-political body. We're simply here to, you know, work on behalf of the town, just as you are, and I don't even know what the political affiliation of my fellow trustees is, and we don't run with any political party, you know, we, when we're on the ballot, as we are when we're re-elected, we don't have a party affiliation. And so all of our work is simply to benefit the entire community regardless of, of political belief.
But nobody runs, nobody's political party is on the municipal ballot? Selectmen, Board of Health, none of them?
No, I understand that. We're, we're no different, and, and I just want to point that out, that, and that doesn't come into our hiring. We don't, we certainly didn't ask Dawn about her political beliefs or leanings, one way or the other, and that doesn't go into any of our policies. And I think Dawn did say that she has, from the time that she's been here, she has purchased conservative books, and so it isn't the fact that that was completely, you know, a neglected area. If there, if it's a weaker area, then she completely, she responded very quickly to, to Joanne's request, and we always do. I think that's, that's important. So I just wanted to, you know, highlight that, that as a, as a Board of Trustees, we're apolitical, and that's our, that's our approach, just as, you know.
Well, we appreciate you clearing up the record for all the town people that are watching. It's important for everybody to have the information for both sides, so we thank you for coming in and clearing that up.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So it's now after 6:30, and we're late for our tax classification hearing, so.
That's actually Dawn's fault.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yep, so I'll open the hearing for the tax classification. We have Sheila from the assessors to.
You still owe me a coffee, Bob.
Anytime.
Good night.
I didn't want to stay for the exciting hearing.
These are always riveting.
I know. Mine's going to be very short and sweet.
This is basically the, the front page showing basically, for the tax classification hearing, that we normally have a single tax rate, not a split tax rate. As you can see, the largest amount of value in our town is the residential, which is the 87.0721 percentage. Then we go down to commercial, industrial, and of course, personal property. So it's required by law that the selectmen vote at a meeting, and if we have a split tax rate or a single tax rate.
And your recommendation is single tax rate?
Single. Oh, yes. I think so.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't.
Should we wait? Oh, here's Dawn.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Good night.
Yes, we need to, we need to vote on whether we're going to do a single tax rate or a multiple tax rates for the different, and I don't think we've ever had a multiple tax rate in town, have we?
Nope.
We don't have enough commercial and industrial to support that.
Yeah, so.
Worcester, Springfield, Woodboss, and those places.
Yeah, big, yeah. Yeah, so.
We should leave it be then.
Yeah, no.
Right?
It would not upset the apple cart at this point, for no reason, so. Yep, on ten motion, single tax rate.
So moved. Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Beautiful?
I just need a signature by hand, please. Just below here is fine.
What is it?
This is just showing the residential percentage of the town, which is 87. Then you go down to the commercial, industrial, and then personal property. We won't have a tax rate, hopefully, maybe this week.
So this was just to say that we're going to stay with a single?
Yep, I always give you the percentages.
All right. So we got.
Okay, I'm out of here. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sheila.
Thank you.
Don't go away, man.
No, no. I've got to go down the hall now.
So that is everything except for public comment. Everybody left us.
That was it?
You got anything?
I do.
My hand's tired, so. My hand is tired, so.
I just want to thank everybody for the Christmas parade and for Santa Claus for coming down on the fire truck. The kids had a great time. We had a good showing down at the little park, and the tree lighting was a little bit disheveled, but we got it, we got it lit, and we couldn't hear Santa Claus countdown. Too much noise. Everybody had fun with the floats and the parade and everything.
We even had a dinosaur walking around.
We saw the dinosaur dancing around and everything. Thank you to the apple orchard for ten. I don't know, I know Sheila was on a four-wheeler, Sheila LeBlanc. I don't know the other ones that, that were in the parade, but thank you to the fire department and the police department for making it a safe, a safe event.
Yep.
It was, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, I mean, the park looks nice, so good job for you and your crew, too.
Thank you to the decorating committee, too, for the Saturday before. I spent a few hours with them down there, helping the girls. The Girl Scouts were down there, Katie and Kristen and Cristy O'Master, they were down there all day. And then there were some guys that did the, the signs on the, when you come and first come into town, and they did the police department out here. Thank everybody that donated their efforts and, and time.
Yep.
For the parade and, and the park. So it'll stay lit until after Christmas, and then hopefully, we don't have a ton of snow, and we can get the lights down sometime in January and do it again next year.
Very good.
That was it.
Yeah. Anything?
I move to, John. Second.
I'm moving to second in all favor. Aye. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Those are your aim lists, right?